I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also those who have passed away in our community. Please also keep the people of Ukraine in your minds tonight as they fight for freedom and democracy in their homeland. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Donahue?
Here. The council and the mayor are going to issue a joint proclamation in support of Ukrainian sovereignty, whereas the American-Ukrainian relations have long served as a foundation for security, freedom, and human rights in Eastern Europe, and whereas Scranton, Pennsylvania is home to many residents of Ukrainian ancestry, and whereas Scranton, Pennsylvania is home to two churches of Ukrainian faith, St. Vladimir Ukrainian Catholic Church and St. Michael's Orthodox Church of UOC of USA, both of which provide support for residents of Scranton and further our ties with Ukrainian people, and whereas democracy and self-determination are cornerstones for values of both the United States and Ukraine, and whereas Ukraine's ability to govern themselves freely and independently is vital to the preservation of their people, history, culture, and art, and whereas the mayor and city council members share a commitment to democracy and freedom in the United States and around the world, and have great appreciation for the Ukrainian people and culture, which are an integral part of the city of Scranton. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Scranton, affirm our support for the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Mr. Waldenberg, please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, updated code enforcement report from the Office of Economic and Community Development dated February 23, 2022. 3B, overtime review for all departments as provided by City Controller dated February 24, 2022, for the period January and February 2022. 3C, correspondence received February 25, 2022, from Alex Hazori, President/CEO of Friendship House regarding the Friendship House downtown Scranton building acquisition and renovation project. 3D, single tax office city funds distributed dated February 25, 2022.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? I just have one as it relates to the correspondence from Mr. Hazori related to the Friendship House project downtown. Mr. Hazori will be in our caucus on March 15 to discuss those plans and give us a briefing on that. Anyone else received and filed? Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So tomorrow, you know, Lent is upon us, the Knights of Columbus Council, which is sponsoring a bring-back dinner to the whole family, Fish Fry. This will be at St. Anne's Basilica, and the dates will be Fridays, March 4, March 18, April 1, April 8. These will be between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00. The Fish Fry will be available only in the St. Anne's Basilica Shrine Building, dining room in the shrine building. It is at 1239 St. Anne's Street, and you have to preorder by calling the Basilica Shrine office. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have any announcements?
I have two quick ones. Since council returned to council chambers last week, we've kept a mandatory mask rule in effect for council chambers. Beginning next week, we're going to follow CDC guidelines and masks will be optional starting next week, but I wanted to make sure we gave people enough time to prepare for that. And secondly, DePetro's Pharmacy is organizing donations to Ukraine and have asked that we share the following info. They're teaming up with their sweet customer, Arena, whose family is currently in Ukraine to help their citizens with medical supplies. Monetary donations can be sent to St. Vladimir's Ukrainian Catholic Church, 430 North 7th Ave, Scranton. You can also donate medical supplies and drop them off at the church or DePetro's Pharmacy, which is on 3rd Street in Dunmore, by this Friday, March 4, because the plane is leaving on Saturday. They're looking for Tylenol, pain relievers, antidiarrhea, antacids, bandages, gauze pads, Band-Aids, elastic bandages, children's clothing, non-perishable food items, and they're asking for no liquids. And that's all I have.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
First on the list is Joan Hodowanitz.
First, just a reminder that the Scranton Public Library's book sale is still going on through this Sunday, March 6, on the second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown, right in front of Crunch Gym. Great opportunity to get books at a very cheap price, one or $2. Okay, would you please update us on the status of the 2020 audit?
We were told that a draft report was ready, but we still have not received that draft report.
Okay. And how about the negotiations on the various union contracts?
They are still ongoing.
Okay. Last week I asked, did anybody know what had happened to the database that used to be on the city's website for property taxes and refuse fees? And Marie mentioned to me that that might have disappeared if it was something done by Northeast Revenue. Is that why we don't have that database anymore?
I am not aware that that's the case. I'm thinking it's more of a transition to Open Gov, but we will have an answer for you.
If we could get it back up, it would be nice.
Absolutely.
I also asked last week about Mr. Mitesh Patel, the acting treasurer for a 35-day period, what his qualifications were, since there was no resume in the backup.
So we did receive a resume, but we didn't receive it in time to post it in third order for this week, and we'll go in for next week.
Since he was only appointed for a 35-day period, do we have any idea what's going to happen when that runs out? Will he just be extended, or will we have a real treasurer?
We're anticipating having a treasurer appointment.
Okay.
Come down to council.
All right. In today's legislation, the LSA grant for Neyarg Park, $1 million LSA grant, on the backup, under downside, it says, "City will need to use city funds to fund the match." Does that mean that the city then will have to come up with their own $1 million to match that grant? Is that what that means?
I'm sorry, which one was that in reference to?
The LSA grant for Neyarg Park?
Yes.
$1 million grant. The downside, according to the backup, it says, quote, "City will need to use city funds to fund the match." So the city's going to have to kick in $1 million?
Yes.
Okay. On the overtime, that was in third order, I see that Lips is at 74% if it's budgeted overtime as of February 24. Is there a specific reason why they are exceeding their budget so quickly?
Not that I know of, but we will make that also make that request.
I would have expected DPW, you know, with the ice storms and things of that nature, but I wasn't quite sure why Lips was in that category. And you've already answered my questions about the masking update. Thank you. You have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg, would we be able to send correspondence to Eileen Sapriani regarding the Lips overtime?
I'll follow up in the morning, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you. Next on the list, Bayfrannis?
Bayfrannis, Scranton. I hope everybody pays close attention to what I'm about to speak about. I'm going to read the city code right now for the garbage fee. All fees shall be deposited in a special city interest-bearing account to be established by the business administrator. This account will be used to reimburse the city general fund for costs incurred directly for the disposal of refuse. That means that the law says that that money we pay in for the garbage fee can only be used for the disposal, for the operation budget down at the DPW. Now, this garbage fee is in effect for over 10 years, and since then, the money that we've been paying was 178, then it went to 300. That money has been used for the work down at the DPW, plus they put money into the general fund every year, which is illegal. It says it shall only be used for the use of the bills down there. That's it. But every year, and I've come to council over 10 years now asking these questions, and I've gotten the runaround. Everybody tells me, oh, they lost the records down there, they don't know where they are. They've even asked you, is the money going into a general fund? And you've even admitted, yes, it's going into a general fund. I can't believe that you're not doing something about this.
We, I'm sorry, but we also did get an explanation that that money is accounted for.
What's that?
That that money is accounted for, the breakdown of that money is accounted for.
Well, I want to know, is that money being used in the general fund? I was told it was. So here's my point. From what I understand, this money, what the city might do now is change that law, that legislation, and amend it, to say that they can use that money in the garbage fee for the general fund to pay their bills plus the garbage fee, to pay for the DPW usage. Now, if that's the case, that means that our garbage fee money is $300 will be used to pay city bills plus for the garbage fee. Why should we be paying for city bills? We've been doing it for the last 10 years, no matter what you say. You can't prove otherwise. They've admitted that it's going into the general fund. So I don't think it's right. And I'm here against my kids' wishes because of this health pandemic thing, but you didn't leave me any choice. I asked Frank, the city clerk, to have all you council members call me. I wanted to talk to you about allowing people to write in letters and read them aloud like we used to do when it was Zoom. Bill Gahn said absolutely not. So Kyle, when you called me, you said, no, you were not going to allow letters to be read aloud. You said anybody could look them up. No, they can't. I don't even know how to find them. Half the senior citizens in this city don't even know how to use a computer.
I said we would attach them to the minutes, that we wouldn't read them aloud, that we attach them to the minutes.
You think they're going to call you and ask you for the minutes?
But that is the official record of council.
That's not the point. The point is, they should be read aloud so people could hear the questions. Like, I could be asking these questions instead of coming here if I was allowed to, but you said no. Do you know what you said to me, Kyle? You said, "It's a waste of time." It's a waste, you told me it was a waste of time. I'm speaking now. And when these people speak at council, are they a waste of time too? And the nerve of you, Mr. McAndrew, last week, to say that you want to hear what the people say. Who, just Marie and Joan and the people that speak here? How about the rest of the people in the city? Do you want to hear from them, or no? No, apparently not, because you don't want to be held accountable for anything. Mr. Schuster and Mr. McAndrew, all you want to do is grandstand every week and go on and on and on about the mayor or about DPW not getting the street done, not getting it plowed, when all you had to do is, any of these people that call you or wrote to you, all you had to say is, "Call the dispatcher." Why would they come to you, and then four days later, after the snow is gone, you're complaining about streets that supposedly aren't plowed but are well-plowed? No word of respect, or any word of thank you to the DPW guys for doing such a great job. No, no, always, oh, they didn't get the street plowed. Grandstand, grandstand. And this Rothschild, you told me you were going to make a motion to have the people read the letters aloud, and you never did that night. You just forgot about it, didn't do it. So why don't you want the people to be heard? You just don't, because you don't want to be held accountable. Another thing, and this is very important, the sewer sale, the sewer authority sale. The city got millions and millions of dollars that would be held in escrow. Okay. Jason Schweig and his employees have been going through millions and millions of dollars. Somebody better check into this. Nobody is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident homeowner, taxpayer. First off, my thoughts and prayers are with the country of Ukraine and the people there, and people of Ukrainian religion that live here and have relatives over there. I hope this comes to a quick resolution. Putin is just a bully. Anyway, I talked back 16 tonight. A caller had a good idea. Instead of the state stores not selling the Russian alcohol, that's all paid for anyway. They should sell it, that's what this gentleman said, and send the profits to the people of Ukraine and help them out. I think that's a great idea, instead of just throwing it away or whatever they're doing with it. Anyway, so much for that. Today in the mail, like the yearly event, I got my rental registration form, which I've argued here for years and years and years, I shouldn't have to register. I am exempt from paying, and according to the ordinance, I don't know if any of you ever looked at it, it specifically says, if you're exempt, you do not have to register. And I keep getting the notice in the mail every year. Last year I called and talked to the director, and I said this last year even, he said, "All right, Les, don't send it in," and he hung up on me. Well, I'm not sending it in, but they keep sending me the notice in the mail every year, and it's getting really annoying. And I spoke to the mayor twice, and she was supposed to look into it, and I never heard from her. So I hope something is done. And I'm not the only one that happens to. It's postage that's being spent, but it shouldn't have to be. Anyway, that's all. I'm not sending that in, and I'm not going to waste my time, because I don't have to do it. Until they rewrite the ordinance, I will not do it. I'm not a lawyer, but I know you don't have to be. It specifically says, if you live at that property, which is how you do, you do not have to register. Somebody should wake them up in Lips Department and get that taken care of. Lastly, upon further inspection of my tax bill after I was here last week, I did see $600. I have a double, so I have to pay $600 for a garbage fee. But how do I know I'm getting the $60 off, which is 10%?
That's factored into the refund or the discounter.
How do I know that? I don't know what my taxes are from year to year. How do I know they're taking $60 off?
I mean, you're going to have to take that up with the tax collectors' office on how they set up the bill. We don't have control on how they set up the bill.
And I also looked at my receipt from last year, and it said $60, not $540. I think I'm getting ripped off along with everybody else in this city. I think that's why the city wanted to put it in with the property taxes, so they could steal money from the people. I don't know if I'm paying $540 or $600. Should be $540. And before you people, well, not all of you up there now, but before council decided to put it in with our property taxes, I knew what I was paying. I came to City Hall, I paid $540. Now, I don't know if I'm paying 500, 540, or 600. Somebody should be looked into, because I think the people are getting ripped off. And it's not fair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list, Lee Morgan.
Lee Morgan. My first thing here tonight is that, you know, I appreciate council and the mayor, you know, wishing the Ukrainian people the best, but I'm just thoroughly amazed, as I have really stuck pretty tight to what's going on in Ukraine, because I have satellite radio on my truck, I drive a truck for a living, so I've been really listening to it since the conflict started. And I think the American people should know that, and people can check this out themselves, they can do whatever they want to do. Ukraine gave up all its nukes, and America guaranteed their, basically their sovereignty. Well, what's generally occurred is the US government never really stood their military up until Trump was president, and then he gave them the anti-aircraft missiles and anti-tank missiles, not enough to defend their country, but enough to get them started. And they were using these against the Russians, and then they were running out. And our president didn't give them any lethal aid. I don't know what he was sending them, blankets or medical supplies, but so the Polish and the Romanians took from their stockpile and sent them to Ukraine. And then the Germans sent a thousand, and then the Turkish sent some. And now, there's some stuff in Washington now. But you know, the one thing we learned in this whole thing is that America's military has been underfunded for decades. And when I was a child, I'm 62, going to be 63, America had the ability to fight two full wars on two fronts. We don't have enough equipment to really fight a full-blown war on one front now. And I just think we totally lack leadership, because it's the Germans and the Italians that put SWIFT in play, not the President of the United States. Okay? It's Europe that started putting the punishing sanctions on Russia, not the United States. As a matter of fact, our own president couldn't even go there. He had to send Carmella Harris there because he's in, I believe, the early stages of dementia, and he can't remember what he's doing and where he's going, and we're in big trouble here, because the Russians are definitely threatening to nuke us. Nobody's laughing about that, because Putin has no respect for human life. All right? And the saddest part of that of all is that when Reagan was in the White House, he talked about Star Wars Defense, putting platforms in space, and so that when the missile did an arch, we'd blow it up in outer space, because they punch out through the atmosphere and come back in. We never built that. You know what we've done in this country? We've exported all our industry, and all the people that refused to work, we've sent them money. I mean, you remember the meeting that was here, and the mayor talked about the money they were getting, and they were going to find illegals to give money to. I sat right here and I listened to it, right in this chamber. We've got big problems. And the other thing I have here tonight is, and that's why when the president gives his address tonight, I don't know if it's worth watching, no disrespect to his office, but he only writes what the teleprompter tells him to say, and you can't convince me they're his words. And when he does, when he takes questions from a reporter, they're lined up, and he's told who to ask for, and then the teleprompter tells him what they're going to ask and what he's going to say back. This is the guy that's protecting the free world, and the Democratic Party, in my opinion, put a candidate up they knew could not do the job. And then we find out in the Durham investigation that the Russian hoax was just a hoax from Hillary Clinton and the Democratic National Committee. But yet, we as Americans want to be safe, and we want to be free, but we're good at playing politics. Now, the other thing I have here, Mr. Donahue, you know, I hope you tell the people in the city of Scranton, maybe at a later meeting, how much the city of Scranton spent to put all the signs up for the roads and why they took them down. You probably can't figure that out, but, and that's not a personal shot at you, because you weren't on council then, and I don't know what notes are left from that money being spent. But you know, I drive a truck, and I see our old signs sitting on light poles in the middle of the woods. And I'm not even kidding you, I'm dead serious. The first time I drove by one, I couldn't believe it. They might pull them out of a scrapyard, who knows?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'll be back. Thank you.
Next on the list, Dave Dobson.
One thing I really love, Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton, about Joe Biden is, he's not Donald Trump. He tried to extort that poor guy. Last week, I ended up, I fell a little short, I apologize for that, but from what I'm reading, DeNaples landfill, or land pile, whatever you want to call it, wants to run either pipes directly from their wet shake pools, lagoons, straight down to the gorge above Neyarg, a mile or two above. And once again, that'll be, what do you mean? You can trust me. I shouldn't have to pay to put this into the sewage treatment plant. I shouldn't have to have this monitored. Your problems don't mean a hill of beans compared to the desires and requirements of the DeNaples empire. So, I mean, we have to really get on it. I don't want to holler at anybody, I voted for everybody, including the mayor. I'd like to see people getting along and start getting involved in some activism here, because we're getting nothing from them except a pile of garbage. And then they want to pollute one of the pure streams that comes in into the city. You could practically drink that water right off the falls, except for DeNaples landfill and his junkyard up above it. In the '60s, Lady Bird Johnson had a fence erected in the area where you could look over 81 and see the scrapyard. And now they're just, well, if you want to go up and take apart and bring it back and pay for it, and the prices are horrible. They wanted $30 for a little bumper part, I went up to Antares site and got the whole bumper, the bumper cover, and the bumper struts for $52. And you take it off yourself and go hunt it down. That's with this, I mentioned it last week, externalizing a business's expenses is when they don't have to fix the problems that they have created, like the column dumps, the abandoned mines, the pools of water and strip mines that, I mean, kids even used to swim in them in my area, but you never knew what was on the bottom, you know? And the whole town, just surround it, it was like an island except for the three roads that left town, and that was it. And it's a shame. I hope that we could change our attitude, seeing as we're trying to fix the environment. It's not going to work with people like that, Empire Landfill ruling the roost. And hopefully the president will have something to say to the anti-vaxxers tonight, because we're supposed to be out of the woods, but I've heard that so many times already, you know? I just heard it too many times. Yeah, news was good in the paper, and I'll try and get this in finally, I have about a minute here. Fiscal watchdog, now this is two or three weeks old, I spoke on it before, budget report becomes a political flashpoint in school funding fight. And the whole thing about it is, they don't feel that if we fund the schools properly in Pennsylvania according to incomes of people and how much taxes they can collect out of the public in the town, that if the scores... the public in the town, that if the scores don't increase, they shouldn't have to spend it. The scores will never increase if they don't have, if they don't spend the money. And even worse yet, even the wealthier kids will get a poorer education. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
I might suck out early, I'll catch you on the television tomorrow.
Thank you. That exhaust, the sign-in sheet, would anyone else like to address council?
I will start with seventh order items, because you'll be voting on them tonight. Hopefully, I'll get along to some other things, however. Seven F. I am vehemently against this, unless you are willing to make this a proposition that will happen for every corner that has a, a gas station, a former gas station on it, and can't do anything because the property owners can't do anything with it, because the ground needs remediation and there's probably been leaks from the station. And I do believe, five 24, which I couldn't find it, Penn Avenue is, is privately owned by Mobil Oil, or otherwise, I don't think they would be splitting the cost of this hundred, it's really a $200,000 project according to the backup. And so half of it's for a private owner. If you wanna go find some other ones, Music Street, where everybody from 307 comes down and comes into the city downtown, that's, there's one there that has been blighted and an eyesore for a long time. There's another, go down Luzern Street, there's another one there that causes problems. And I'm sure there are others around the city. So unless you're willing to do that for every private owner who has a closed gas station, I suggest you take another look. Seven A. I just, just a comment, because I don't see how you can put a million dollars into that building, it's a well-structured building, and I don't know if you've had a separate, a separate, I guess, quote for how much that is, what is really gonna be to do that. And also, again, it is, there's been a lot of money over this last decade in that, put into that corridor. While other areas of the city, other neighborhoods keep waiting for something, probably a lot of them, anything. So, we had the 500 Lackon Avenue downtown, now you've got something on again tonight, where you, where you're going to borrow money, I believe, for another downtown project. It's time to look at areas that haven't received anything at all in the last umpteen years. Those poor people, I'll never forget them, because it's been 20 years since they came to this podium and said, could we please get our road paved? It hasn't been paved in over 50 years. And so now it's probably another at least 20. So, I think you have to do some prioritizing. Remember, in a couple of years, we're gonna get a tax increase of 20-some percent. You have got to, to look beyond this year and spend, spend, spend. And I don't think you should be putting out any money for the, the monies that are going to be coming to us until we know what the ground rules are, and until you've had a public hearing. Otherwise, there's not gonna be anything left by the time you guys get around to doing a survey or whatever you're gonna do. It just, I don't think is, is a fair way to operate. And then, tonight, three C. I guess that's another property that's gonna be going off the tax rolls. I don't know if anybody looked to, to see into the questions I asked last week about if you can have partial, maybe fifth order?
I have an answer for you on fifth order.
Yeah, I'm, I'm anxious to hear those. And then, this one's sort of tiny, in the grand scheme of things, but in Friday's paper, there was a five-and-a-half inch legal notice, which, you know, I don't understand. This was on a Friday afternoon, and does anybody know when the bid opening was, or is? I suggest you start reading legal notices, but it was Monday. Now, to me, that's terrible. It, it makes, it has a definite implication that it's, it's geared for somebody, who knows it's going to be in two days. I think you should actually change the code, so that the time between the legal notice for asking for bids and the bid opening gives everybody enough time to participate, especially on a weekend. I mean, everybody that's ever done anything political knows Fridays, the day you do nothing.
But let me talk to you about that after, because I'm, okay? Would anyone else like to address council?
Tom Koinmanouka, members of council. I take a look back with this electric car purchase, and I go back to the fire department and gas cars and vehicles being used for personal use down outside of the city and being charged to the city funds. These car, these electric cars are supposedly to go to a specific purpose of zoning, but there's nothing in there that actually limits or locks them to zoning. They could be the mayor's personal car or whoever else it's actually handed to. With the electricity being used for them, is there gonna be a way to monitor the electric consumption, who's using it? Is there gonna be an actual logbook of mileage? Is it going to go home with people? Is it gonna be allowed to be used as a personal car? There's a lot of things involved in that. Way back then, we talked in this body about having GPS put on vehicles, not only the trash trucks, but a number of city trucks. We're going to spend for 10 very expensive electric vehicles, when we haven't even addressed GPS equipment to track the vehicles that we have, to make sure that they are being used properly for city business and not being used majorly for personal business rather than city. I had to take a look at electric cars, because I had to circle back and look at the new data. Batteries for them can run anywhere from $8,000 to replace, all the way up to $40,000 depending upon the vehicle that's bought. The best ones on the market are from, of course, Elon Musk, and their average of eight years lifespan. Of course, you have to take into account that those batteries are also out towards California, they're not in the colder environments. So, we're looking at a continuing budget for battery replacement, which is quite extensive, not even counting the recent problems with fires with these cars themselves. There are a number of factors involved with electric cars. I think they're wonderful, but I think they are not ready for TV. I think at this point in time, natural gas vehicles are much more prudent. If ice, if an electric car gets smashed, guess what? You're not gonna repair it like you are a gas or a car vehicle, because when the components get smashed inside of an electric vehicle in an auto accident, you might as well just throw the car away and get a new one. They are incredibly expensive for maintenance in case of accident during operation. That's all that I have to say about that. Now, as for the US and Ukraine, I've been a little bit distracted over the last week and haven't looked at a lot of the numbers over the electric cars, because I've been monitoring US air traffic in Poland and Romania. And to say that we have been absent from that push and from the forces overseas is completely ignorant. For the past week and a half, we have had circling, three Strato tanker air fillers, four drones, and two spy planes that have been looping in the Baltic Sea area coming out of Greece. We are not blind in the area. We have been monitoring the border and up there with forces 24/7. At this point in time, someone in the military actually picked up that it might be a good idea to change or remove some of the call signs identifying those planes that are up in the air as they're visible to everyone else out there. But I wanna assure you that Britain, the United States, has taken a strong forefront in supporting the Ukrainian people by intelligence, by air coverage, surveillance, and keeping the border between Ukraine, Poland, Romania, secure and under watch. Hopefully, it'll wind up to be a, to cool down this situation. But I just want you to be aware that we are there, and we do have eyes there, and we are participating. We are not letting everyone else take the burden. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council this evening?
Good evening, it's Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I'm a senior citizen, surprise, surprise. But getting around downtown now with the ice, it's really treacherous. I was on Washington Avenue this week, going to the Cultural Center to get some tickets, and I kept thinking, where am I gonna park? I've gotta climb over this mountain of ice to get in to theirs. I made it, went in and got my tickets, now you get in, now you gotta get back. So tonight, pulling up, I'm hoping that in front of City Hall would have been a little bit better, but it wasn't. I saw someone, one of the speakers tonight pulled up and backed me, and he jumped out of his car and hopped over that pile of ice out there. You know, I can't go hopping over any kind of ice out there. I don't wanna fall, I don't wanna break something. So my, my idea is, I know, like putting down salt and sun should really do the job of getting those piles of ice down. And I know we had two ice storms, two Fridays in a row, you know, so I understand that. But I also understand that we want our citizens to be safe as we move around the city, and right now, I don't think it's very safe, unless you go to the corner, but when you park your car, you gotta get out, and you can't, and then have to pay at the meter, you know, for the use of that parking spot there. So that's a little sidebar as to my normal. The second thing I wanted to ask someone, I didn't get a chance to call down to DPW for this one, but maybe they could hear it. At the corner of Mulberry and North Webster, there's a beautiful North Webster sign that's hanging down. It was up for, it was three things that held it up. Now it's only hanging by one. And it's gonna be, someone's gonna hit someone's car, or someone personally just riding, riding around or walking around. So I'm hoping that someone can get that over to, to the DPW to get that fixed. And of course, my favorite subject, now, I was thinking, it's a terrible thing as we go through life, we have to learn to be patient. Patience is one of the virtues, I think, that I struggle with, and I don't know who else in this room struggles with. So after I was up here a few weeks ago, talking about the street signs, and I did have communications with the DPW about the street signs and all, so of course, I have to learn, try to learn to be a little bit patient. They are working with the street signs and getting them up, and they've divided them into sections of the city. So, the hill section where I live, you know, those signs are up, the next section is gonna be south side and then west side, so it makes sort of sense to do it that way, but it also goes against our patience to know that we want them to be now. I mean, we're, we're a now generation, but when you have 9,000 signs to put up, you know, we can't be a now generation. So I just wanted to let everyone know out there that the street signs are coming, but it just takes us, it takes a little while. I've been talking for four years about the street signs, and it's good to see that there is advancement on the street signs, but we just have to be patient with it, and I'm too sure that they're doing all they can down there at DPW to work on the street signs. They do have another vendor that's working with them, so maybe we'll see some more advancement in the near future. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. I actually did see that sign at Mulberry and North Webster late this afternoon, and I just haven't had a chance to.
Okay, good.
But that's gonna be first on my list tomorrow.
Okay, it's been that way for a couple of weeks, probably from the winter.
I just, I just noticed it today, so, but, thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do, I have two things this evening. The first thing, I apologize, I forgot to mention earlier, but I just quickly wanted to announce and make reminder that the Beautiful Blocks program is open for applications for 2022. You can place an application in by March 21st, or pre-applications, rather. So, I know NeighborWorks has been in previously to discuss that, and we've often talked about the Beautiful Blocks program, which has been really successful over the last few years. So, I would encourage any presidents who are interested in making changes to the exterior of their home, to take a look at NeighborWorks and that program, and see if they could partner with other neighbors to get that accomplished. And then, the other thing that I wanted to bring up to discuss tonight, I did mention that I would be meeting with our public health coordinator, Dr. Saxena, and we had met last week, and so I just wanted to provide a brief overview of some of the things that we had discussed. We had a great, long conversation about what she's been doing in that office since she's been in that position, and I was really impressed to hear about all of the activities. And first, I just wanted to mention that on the website, there is a dashboard with data for COVID on there, so that's available to the public. And then they recently published a public health page on the website, and there's a lot of great information that people can find on that site. And if there's something that the public field is missing, then I'm sure they'd be open to adding additional information on there, so you could find out about upcoming events and programs, health programs in the, in the city that would, that you might be interested in. She has been doing a lot on the COVID front, there is a recovery team that the, that the city has, so I know she's very active in that and in providing recommendations on COVID to, to the city, to the mayor. There have been vaccine clinics, and there's more that are planned as well. There will be one that they're hoping for a children's fair to take place over the springtime. And they've also been trying to provide vaccines in different neighborhoods around the city to make them more accessible. And she's been developing health clinics that they're looking to host at housing developments primarily. And we're looking at doing a possible blood drive, which is really necessary right now, there's a, there's a high need for, for blood, so I'm really looking forward to the city being able to do that. There are various coalitions that, that she serves on as representative from the city, including ones for suicide prevention, drug and alcohol recovery. There will be a recovery panel that's gonna be held by the state, but it'll be taking place locally, and I know that she's going to be serving on that panel and representing the city. She's been doing a great deal of work connecting with local nonprofit organizations, schools, colleges, really making those, those connections with those people, so that when, when we do have events or we wanna partner with someone, we know who to go to, and they know that we're, that we're interested in that, or that we have the public health coordinator working on those things here. So, and, and other agencies, state agencies. So that does take quite a bit of time to, to make those connections, to build those lists, and then when we have things going on, to, to reach out to those partners. And then, on the employee health front, I know that she's been working with Highmark to be able to promote their service. to be able to promote their services that, like, city employees have, it's through their insurance, so that people are aware of those different services. And in October, they had partnered with Delta Medics to hold cancer screenings for city employees. And then they're looking to partner with the NAACP on a health fair coming up in the spring, too. So there's a lot of great things on the public health front that are happening with the city, and I'd encourage people to take a look at the, at the page for some more information. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, and I'm sure she'd be open to coming for a caucus one night if, if we wanted her to. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple. So I want to start with the refuse fee. So of course, last year, you know, we embedded the refuse fee into the tax bill, and it, I like the idea. I think we all agree because the collection rate has increased dramatically, but there's still issues, all right, with exonerations. I received a few complaints over the past week with regard to the exoneration process. And for those of you out there that don't understand how that works is, you know, there's still houses or properties being identified as having rentals if they don't, so they're being charged a bill, all right? And then they have to pay it and then apply for exoneration, which means get your money back, all right? Or prove that, I don't have three apartments. I don't, I only live as a single dwelling, or maybe I had an apartment 20 years ago. But some of the concerns I got were even like a bar owner being charged $900 last year, filled out the exoneration form to get the money back and as yet to get it. And the same 900 was charged again this year or embedded in her bill. And she has her own private contractor because she has to to pick up her garbage. So there's, and I know last year, we said, oh, you know, or we heard that there'll be some kinks they need to work out. Well, obviously, they haven't been worked out. So these concerns that were, were sent to me, Mr. Waldenberg graciously sent them, and I said, send them to the related departments that need, you know, to need to know about these concerns. So I got back two responses. One is from our city tax collector, Kathy Weschler, and she sent a letter, and she's doing a great job and she's trying to work through this, but she sent a letter to the business administrator on January 21st. I'm not going to read the whole letter, but I'm going to read the meat of it that makes sense. And, and what it says is, "I understand that there were discussions between city and my predecessor concerning the ability of the single tax office to handle refuse fee exonerations with its present staff. Hiring a new employee to handle the refuse fee exonerations in 2021 never materialized, and it was my understanding that the city is not planning to fund the position in the single tax office for, for this year. As such, the single tax office has established following procedures for the collection of the refuse fee, which is included in the 22, I'm sorry, 2022 real estate tax bill." So in essence, what, what, what the tax collector is saying is, "The single tax office will collect the full amount of the city and school district real estate taxes along with the refuse fee due on the date of payment, but refuse fee exonerations will not be done in the single tax office. All refuse fees, exonerations, and refunds will be handled by the city of Scranton." All right? So this letter was sent on January 22nd to the administration. And in closing, in her letter, she said, "Education on the refuse fee collection process is critical to avoid taxpayer confusion," which is happening abundantly now. According, accordingly, "It is essential that the new procedure be fully explained to the public through mailings, the media, the city, and the single tax office websites, social media, and otherwise. The dissemination of this information needs to be started immediately." And I agree, but this letter is, is over a month old. And I would like to take the opportunity to further discuss the procedure with you. So with that said, I agree, because I'm getting all types of questions, like where, how do I get it? Where do I fill it out? What's going on? No one's answering the phone. So, and then I received another correspondence from the acting treasurer, which, he stated that, "The acting treasurer visited my office," this is from Frank Goldenberg, our council secretary. He said, "He visited the office earlier today and advised that he's working with the single tax office and city administration to pinpoint the time when and where the single tax office should be notified about any exonerations, in addition to any permanent exonerations to avoid incorrect billing year after year, the so-called kinks that weren't worked out yet. He is also reaching out to the county assessor's office today and will keep counsel apprised of his findings." All right? So this is a start in the right direction. Is it late? Yes. But with that said, and I look forward to hearing some updates, but last week, I made a motion to develop our own city council request log. And these concerns are going to be in there. Like I said, these will be visible, trackable for administration, us and all of you. So with that said, and, and you're doing a great job populating this, Mr. Waldenberg. You just started, and I'm very excited about it. So with that said, and at the risk of grandstanding, I'd like to address Ms. Freiness's concerns about emailing concerns, inquiries, questions, complaints that aren't read here aloud. Well, I think we should consider just putting them in here. It's pretty much the same thing as either I'm reading it or being read because it's going to be visible, all right, and trackable by, like I said earlier, administration, counsel, and the all of you. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just quickly, first, I would like to wish everybody of any of Welsh ancestry, happy St. David's Day. And I'd also like to congratulate Paul Dean on his retirement after 33 years in service as a police mechanic. His service is greatly appreciated. In terms of Ms. Schumacher's question from last week, in terms of a for-profit, for-profit business operating under the umbrella of a nonprofit institution and then also a nonprofit renting off a for-profit business, in terms of the for-profit operating under the umbrella of a nonprofit institution, it's my understanding that we have all the ability to go after those, to carve them out in terms of how taxes are collected. It's just a matter of the staff to actually do it. So at the moment, it technically falls on the assessor's office because that's where we get our data from. I'm hoping, you know, we could work to a point where we start targeting that, and I'm hoping a reassessment will help in that, to target those for-profit entities that operate under the nonprofit umbrella. In terms of nonprofits renting off, I know you brought up the mall at Steamtown as an example. From what I was told and from a couple of different sources, is there's no legal remedy to carve those out because at the end of the day, the for-profit business is still making a profit off of the rent they charge to the nonprofit. I hope that answers your question. And just to address Ms. Freiness's comments is, in terms of reading out comments out loud, I really don't feel comfortable making anybody read words that aren't theirs. And that's why I called it a waste of time. I feel like that's a slippery slope when you ask somebody else to read someone else's statements. That's why I said if someone wanted to, if someone feels uncomfortable coming to counsel and they want to submit comments, we will place that into the minutes, and that's the official record, so that there is a record of that. But besides that, I just don't feel comfortable asking anybody to read somebody else's words and/or statements, sentiments, et cetera. And that's all I have tonight. Mr. Waldenberg?
5B for introduction and ordinance, establishing a no parking zone from 15 feet south of the garage located in the 300 block of North Webster Avenue, north to the intersection with Mulberry Street, with the no parking sign to be posted 15 feet south of the garage entrance, and no parking here to corner sign to be placed at the north entrance of the garage.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, up to the amount of $410,000 for the project to be known as Gray Street Park, located at 42 Gray Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant to the amount of $410,000 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction and resolution, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, up to the amount of $1 million for the project known as Adams Avenue Streetscape Corridor Gateway Project in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant up to the amount of $1 million awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction and resolution, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act, up to the amount of $1 million for the project known as Naog Pool Complex, located at 500 Arthur Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant up to $1 million awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction and resolution, accepting a donation presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department from Anthony and Anna Mae Andruskevich in the amount of $100.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd just like to thank the Andruskeviches for their donation. I did speak with chief judge, and he was very grateful.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Berkheimer Tax Innovations to provide collection services for the payroll preparation tax.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 16, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $997,500 for the project to be known as UNC 530 Cedar Avenue Anchor Building Project, located at 530 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful, and educate, and execute, and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $997,500 if awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation, the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, so I don't like voting against grants because you know they're considered free money, but they're still taxes, and taxes should be well spent. So in 1987, Act 47 was enacted, okay? And then January of 92, the Scranton went into distressed status, all right? So Pell was here for 30 years, and then the legislation says to navigate out of Act 47. All right? So they had, I'm sorry, I'm reading to the wrong resolution, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I thought we had 70. I apologize. I'll save that for.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunninghugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 17, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for $35,641.50 to help fund infrastructure and charging stations for up to 10 electric vehicles, funding for which will be simultaneously being sought by the city of Scranton, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second. On the question?
On the question, last week, I spoke to this resolution as well as the next item 7C. I'm not going to tie the city's hands by denying us the application process of a grant, but I would warn counsel, looking at when these projects are actually going to be completed, this grant money here only accounts for about one-fifth of these projects, and I think there's too many questions with these, this type of vehicle, that we have to make sure we're doing a cost-benefit analysis to make sure that this is the right decision to make for the city.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunninghugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 18, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for $75,000 to help fund up to 10 electric vehicles for code enforcement officers in the city of Scranton, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
What's the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, the same as item 7B. There's a lot of questions here. If it is in the city's best interest to go into a decision like this, I don't want to lose out on this $75,000, but I think a lot of these questions need to be answered before we get ourselves involved with the, with the buying 10 vehicles for the city.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunninghugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 19, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Fire. the City of Scranton to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation for up to $49,975 to help fund automated external defibrillators, AEDs, and authorize the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, Resolution Number 20, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Strategic Management Planning Program by the City of Scranton for funds to be used to successfully navigate its exit from Act 47, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. McAndrew.
No, go ahead, go ahead. I lost my place before I let you go.
Well, so, in caucus, I made a suggestion that we talk with the administration to see what the clear picture is of this department. We have several things happening at the same time. This here is to go out for a grant, to keep Pell on, that's one thing. We have independent funding for a director of finance, that's another piece of this puzzle. We have Rainey and Rainey conducting services for the city, that's another piece of this puzzle. And I think we need to get a clear picture of what's happening in this department to see where we're moving forward. So I understand that this is a piece of it, but I think, me personally, I've never been, it's never been explained to me what route and what the vision is of this administration for the department. So I think that council does need to hear what that is.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes. First of all, I apologize for losing my place earlier during the reading of resolutions. But like I said earlier, I don't like to vote against grants, but, you know, they're considered free money, but they're really not free money, they're taxes that should be well spent. So like I said earlier, Act 47 was acted in 1987, right? We went into it in 1992, 30 years ago. Pell was selected for us to navigate and exit Act 47. This resolution is asking Pell to come back and help us navigate some more. And then we were told that the reason the administration wants to bring Pell back because we voted down, or I shouldn't say voted down, but a majority of us disagreed with the finance director in last year's budget or this year's budget. And this was a way to satisfy that. But it appears that the administration is seeking both, all right? So this is a vote on principle, all right? I believe we're in a good place. That's what we're told by administration after we exited Act 47. I believe that our administration needs to pull themselves up by their bootstraps and let's stand on our own and get the job done. So for them reasons, I'll be voting no.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 21, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for $100,000 to be utilized for ground remediation at 524 Penn Avenue, formerly Al's Mobile Mart, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson, of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, as Ms. Schumacher had indicated earlier, it does get a little concerning when we're, you know, pumping money into a private business that you would expect if they've contaminated the water in that area that they would be responsible for it. And certainly, I don't want to see a precedent set on this. However, if we are able to get a grant to help offset this, and it's going to help the health and safety of the people in that area, I'll probably support this. But it is a little concerning that we have to come to the rescue of a private business who, if they were responsible for that contamination, they should be responsible for all of the cleanup. That's all.
Mr. King, would you support a motion to table this until we get more information?
I could support that, yes.
I'd make a motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table on the question? All those in favor of tabling this legislation say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Item 7F is hereby tabled.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 22, 2022, accepting a donation from the Wright Center to the Scranton Police Department in the form of 270 Quick View At Home Over-the-Counter COVID-19 Test Kits.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed the council number 9, 2022, is currently tabled.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It was tabled to allow for a public hearing that was held this evening and remain tabled for us to consider additional amendments and also in anticipation to hold another public meeting to, once those changes are made, for the public to have a chance to comment on those changes. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Visit ectv.network for the ECTV program schedule, city and county meeting rebroadcasts, and more. ECTV, Electric City Television, live municipal broadcasts on Comcast, Channel 19.